I call to order this March 12, 2025, meeting of the North Allegheny School District. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
A pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Starting off with our calendar review, we had an executive session this evening to discuss a personnel matter, and this evening we will have our Health Services Program Review Presentation and our Social Studies Curriculum Review Presentation. Next week, we will have our regular voting meeting. And now I will turn it over, Dr. Hyland, to introduce our reports.
I'm so excited to have everybody in here. We have social studies on one side of the room. We have Health Services on the other side of the room. It's like the Hatfields and McCoys. But first of all, it shows so much that both individual areas were willing to come out and support, you know, their discipline or their area of expertise and also support the folks that did a lot of the work to get this done. So Bridgette and Joelle, thank you so much for the work that you did in leading both of those groups. And with that, we're going to kick off the Health Services Program, and I believe Bridgette is going to kick off the show tonight, so.
Good evening. My name's Bridgette Walensky. For those of you who do not know me, and I'm the Health Services Chairperson of the North Allegheny School District. Before I begin, I would like to thank you and the board for your time this evening and allowing us to present our department review. I would also like to acknowledge Dr. DeLuca for all her time and support during the process. In addition, I would also like to acknowledge some of the team members for their hard work and time. Could you please stand Leslie Barotny, Brianna Meter, and Lori Kelly. Thank you. So the purpose of our review is to examine the Health Services Department and identify where our strengths and our areas of needed growth are, and to ensure that we are providing the very best possible care to the North Allegheny community. Guiding this framework was the National Association of School Nursing Practice Framework from 2024, with the student in the center and family and school community surrounding the student, supporting the student. In addition, are the four key principles of school nursing practice, care coordination, quality improvement, leadership, community and public health that help support the student, family and community as well, and we're guided by our standards of practice. In addition, the North Allegheny School District Strategic and Comprehensive Plan and their goals also helped along with the review. So during this department review, our philosophy did not change, but it's important for you to know that we are guided by the Health Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health Regulations, the Allegheny Health Department, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, nursing licensure requirements, and the scope and standards of school nursing practice. We provide education, prevention, and early intervention of possible health complications. And we rely on our relationships with students, families, administration, teachers, support services, the North Allegheny School District Police Force, and local healthcare professionals to best support students. So who are we? Our department is comprised of 10 certified school nurses who work within the professional bargaining unit, as well as seven full-time support nurses and two part-time, excuse me, support nurses. Seven of the support nurses are registered nurses and two are licensed practical nurses. They are classified as paraprofessionals in the district. The support nurses help to care for students and staff, along with clerical work under the discretion of the certified school nurse. As I mentioned, we have 10 certified school nurses in the district. And to become a certified school nurse, you need a minimum of a bachelor's degree and then additional credits to receive certification from the Pennsylvania Department of Education as a certified school nurse and education specialist. Within our district, five certified school nurses have gone further and received their master's degrees, and four have achieved national school nurse certification. The certified nurses are responsible for providing episodic care to the students and staff, care coordination of their caseload of students, along with monitoring for community and public health issues, quality improvement concerns, and provide leadership to the school community in health and safety. We also sit on 504 teams, IEP teams, and other district committees. Our nurses have served for many years at the local, state, and national level for our nursing, school nursing organizations. Lori Kelly, the nurse at NAI, currently represents Pennsylvania at the national level in the National Association of School Nurses. We currently have Anne Marie Crawford, the nurse at HOZAC and NAI, as president of the Pennsylvania Association of School Nurses and Practitioners. Myself and Leslie Barotny are Southwest Region reps for the same organization. Several of us have presented at past Pennsylvania nurse conferences. Further Lori Kelly, I'm sorry, further Lori Kelly has testified in front of the PA State Senate regarding COVID-19 issues, along with completing a webinar for the PA School Boards Association regarding COVID. Lastly, a couple of our nurses have published, including contribution to a National Association of School Nurses Position Statement, nursing journals, and have authored a chapter in an upcoming textbook on school nursing being published in 2025. Collectively, we have 525 years of nursing experience behind the Health Services Department, with an average of 27 years of nursing experience per nurse in the district. So these statistics that I'm about to bring to you are based on a 23-24 school year. Last year, we had 87,133 visits through the health offices. Since our last department review in 2018, we have seen an increase of approximately 17,000 visits annually throughout the offices. For the 24-25 school year, our office visits are already up 2,500 as of January. These visits include medically complex students that require skilled nursing care, including catheterizations, tube feedings, diabetes management, seizure care and support, as well as students with complex mental health and behavioral concerns. Last year, we administered 23 doses, 23,000 doses of medications to students. This was increased by 56% since the last review in 2018. 1,984 students were identified as having at least one serious chronic health condition. Of these students, 508 of them required specialized nursing services. In addition, we work very closely with the other student service support teams to help support all students achieve academic excellence. So in preparing for this review, we examined district statistics. We conducted a literature review of evidence-based journals. We examined our scope and standards of practice. We looked to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for requirements, the Pennsylvania Department of Health requirements, professional nursing licensure regulations, and the surveys that we conducted within and outside of the district. Our first recommendation is that the Health Services Department will actively pursue learning opportunities and resources to best support district students and families from diverse backgrounds. Throughout the district, the increase in students of various linguistic backgrounds is having an impact on the time provided and care of these students. As future translation resources are considered, we ask that the nurses be included in this group due to the increase in health needs in this particular student population. In addition, the nurses need relevant professional resources to grow our knowledge and best support the school community. Unfortunately, due to the busyness of the health offices and the lack of double coverage in many of the offices, the nurses are unable to access the education provided by the district during guided plan. Because the nurses are looked to as a resource for educating the rest of the school community, we often are called upon to teach during professional development days to various departments, limiting the opportunities for professional development of our school nurses. Therefore, we're asking for the district to provide payment for memberships to the National Association of School Nurses and the Pennsylvania Association of School Nurses and Practitioners for the 10 certified school nurses at a cost of $130 per nurse to provide relevant educational resources to the nurses. These memberships then can be included in the annual CHARs report for reimbursement for health services. Our second recommendation is to improve care, improve care delivery and update treatment environments throughout the district health offices. During the review, we closely assessed each of the district health offices for areas of needed improvement, and for a relatively small cost, we could greatly improve the safety of our health offices. These requests include a locked medication storage solution at Peebles, as their current situation is inadequate and there's an increasing number of students requiring controlled substances. We also request the purchase of nine new cots for several of the health offices, as cots with small tears and holes can provide a breeding ground for infectious diseases. North Allegheny School District is fortunate to have designated health offices in each of the school buildings. Many of them have been recently renovated. However, as the progression of annual planned capital projects occur, the Health Services Department respectfully requests the health office be considered and the nurses consulted with for possible renovations to improve our care delivery systems. And our last recommendation is that we recommend a review of Health Services staffing over the next several years to best support the health, safety, and wellness of every student so they can reach their full academic potential. As we continue to see an increase in the number of students attending North Allegheny School District, an increase in the medical complexities of the students attending, along with the increased demands on the department, we believe our annual review of staffing that best supports the students of our district and their needs would be appropriate. This then ends my presentation. The Health Services Department would like to thank you for your continued support of our program and our nurses. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Walensky. Mrs. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Thank you for your presentation. The only comment I would like to make is, I would make on your public slide presentation, I would note in it how a lot of the support nurses are actual RNs, because it's not showing in what you have typed, and there's a lot of people who assume that the assistant isn't an RN, because, you know, it just sounds to the layperson that certified nurse is a certified, is certified as a nurse, but the other people aren't nurses, whereas actually a lot of our assistants are nurses. So I might make that in the, in the public presentation, just so if anybody is looking at this, they would understand these are real nurses.
I had alluded to that at the beginning. Pardon me? I had alluded to that at the beginning.
Yeah, you said it, but I would make it on the slide. So if somebody from the public is looking at it, they would be able to see, because we do have a group here, but a lot of people, parents and so forth, are at home and just would look at the, the slide presentation and might not realize. I'm telling you, I've told people so many times, they, they really have no idea that they are actual nurses.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Dr. Gibbs?
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Yes, thank you for that presentation. And I think one thing that comes through really loud and clear is that our Health Services Department has a big job, and that you mentioned several areas where the district needs to invest in order to help you do this big job. So could you help us, could you like maybe identify, what are, what do you think are the biggest needs, the most critical needs, to help the department deliver the health services that we need for our district right now?
Honestly, right now, we're, we would need nurses as far as, you know, to try to support the students, just because of the busyness. I mean, I think it's worth a deep dive looking into the staffing, but, you know, that's one area of examination, and then the professional development as well.
I know when we talked before, you mentioned there are some facilities issues that, that are in critical need of being updated, so.
And we had, I had mentioned that in my report, just Peebles, you know, with the medicine cabinet or some sort of option, even if it's on wheels, because currently, right now, it's kept in a filing cabinet. The medications are locked up, which isn't the most ideal. And another would be the cots in several of the health offices, as I had mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McClure?
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. I tell you, the one statistic, thank you, by the way, for the presentation. The one statistic that, that caught my eye was that we have 1,984 serious chronic health conditions out of 8,500 students. That's about 23% by my math here. And I was curious, what defines that? I have a daughter who came through the school with a peanut allergy. Was, is that, put her into that category? Or what, what, what conditions get you there? Because that's a lot of kids.
So it was 1,984.
Right, that's what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
I said 1,984 out of 8,500 totals kids, so it's about 23% of the population has, fits that category. I was curious, what conditions get you there? Just, it seems like an extraordinary number, and has that increased? I'll make it a two-part question.
So it's conditions that are reported to the state in our CHARs report. There are certain chronic conditions, so diabetes, some of them are life-threatening allergies, seizure concerns, it could be blood disorders, those are just to mention a few of them. You know, diabetes, one and two, and all the life-threatening allergies, that's what's qualified as a chronic health condition. It could be spina bifida, it could be Crohn's disease, things of that nature.
And, and the second part of that was, is that, have we seen an increase in that over the years, or is this fairly consistent?
We have not, we have not. It seems to stay fairly consistent. But I think the support, because of the advanced technology, medical technology, has allowed these students to participate in more activities in school, and that's why the nurses are needed, and it's even breakthroughs in medication as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Anyone else? Oh, Dr. Simcoveyak.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Thank you for the presentation. I was taken aback at the number of visits, 87,000 over the course of a school year. Can you provide some feedback as to what the nature of those visits are? How many of them are medication administration? How many of them are urgent concerns? And what types of urgent concerns are the ones that you most commonly see in the context of a school day?
So the numbers that I provided you are illnesses and injuries, mainly students, but we do about 2,000, a little less than 2,000 are for staff. And oftentimes, it's headaches. We're able to keep students in school because of the headaches, because we're allowed to administer the standing order medications that we have access to, and then diabetes care, things of that nature. We provide urinary catheterizations, which are considered procedures with some of these students, and seizure care. When students have seizures, we have to provide care for them. Sometimes it's requiring calling 911, it just depends.
And anything can happen over the course of a school day? So I appreciate what all of you do. So those 87,000, that does not include a child who might come in for medication administration to the nursing office?
No, it does not. They're separate.
These are all acute, urgent concerns?
Yes.
That it could be anything?
Yes.
Anyone else with questions or comments? I would like to say, you know, there was a, I was really impressed with the data in this report, and because beyond the presentation, the report had even more numbers in it. I also did the percent calculation and saw that 24% of, you know, the significant health needs. I really appreciated how you started. The first paragraph of the report said, talked about how ensuring all students are healthy and safe and ready to learn, and that's like, I was, I was pleased that you started that, because it is about our students' learning, and you're taking down those barriers so that they're able to do that. And I just wanted to recognize that important role that all of you have in, in doing that for our students. Kudos to all your professional accomplishments. I was impressed with that, with that list. I appreciated how you went back to your previous program review in 2018, and you gave an update on all the progress, and we don't always see that necessarily. And I just really liked seeing how the steps you had done over the last seven years since your last review, and, and that was, that was meaningful to me. And the other thing was, and then to bookend it, you ended your presentation talking about how the presence of nurses allows students with chronic health conditions and medication to fully participate in all school-sponsored activities. And so I really liked how the beginning and the end, you were just really focusing on our students, and so I appreciated that also. And I, and also back to the data, how you gave detailed numbers about how much those costs cost, the, the cots that you would like to see replaced, and how much like different medicine cabinets can cost. And so I appreciated the, the time you took to get those kind of, you know, actually dig down and get the numbers for us. So it was a wonderful report, a wonderful presentation. Thank you all for what you do for our students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bridgette. Now, my guess is you're going to stick around for the social studies, but don't feel that you have to, but I have a feeling you're going to feel like you have to. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Joelle Keats. She is the department chair of the Social Studies Department. Being a former social studies teacher, I can tell you without hesitation, she is one of the best department leaders that we have. She is a very strong advocate for social studies and the importance of social studies, and the importance of making sure that we have good citizens going out, being able to make good decisions. More now than ever, we need, we need citizens, citizens that are ready to be citizens. So I'm going to turn the mic over to you, Joelle, which I know you'll do a great job.
Thank you. You stole some of my thunder. We already have students who dress like senators, and, right? So we're well on our way. I appreciate your time very much. I think, departing from usual, I'm going to say my thank yous first. I want to say thank you to the team who showed up here today to support us, and to Frank and Dawn for helping me today. Someone, you know, asked me, it must be tough to be a social studies teacher these days. And my response is I, it is tough, but probably not for the reasons that you think. I'm sure it was tough to be a social studies teacher in 1968 when we were fighting in Vietnam. I'm sure it was tough to be a social studies teacher on September 11th. It was, because I was there, and many of us were there. It's not tough to be a social studies teacher, because history is going to grind on with or without us, and our job is really just to prepare them for whatever comes next, and that is unknowable. And I think about the profound privilege that I have to be part of this department and part of the school district, and so my thank you goes to the students and their families, to this board, and also in particular, to the administrators who have supported the teachers, the social studies teachers in particular, over the years. Dr. Hyland at NAI. Long ago, he and I had conversations about tough topics that we're going to be discussing. And Dr. Ewing, and Mr. Swager. Doctors. You know what is funny? I was, my, initially it was like, just say Caitlin, just say Dan, just say Matt, and then, because you'll never remember which one of the doctors are doctors, and all the doctors, all the non-doctors. But Caitlin Ewing and Dan Swager, and Larry Butterini, and Walt Saminsky, and Matt Buchek, and now Dr. Hibner, and we've had tremendous support. And I think that's allowed us to do our jobs in a way that, as Dr. Hyland said, is we're, we're creating citizens. And when you hear the math review, you know, I doubt every math teacher stands up and says, this is a room full of future mathematicians. And I doubt every physics teacher says, this is a room full of future, right, bridge builders or engineers. But every day, social studies teachers stand in front of kids, and it is a room full of citizens. It's a room full of future voters. It's a room full of maybe somebody who will run for office someday. So what makes it hard is the profound responsibility, I think, we all feel for preparing them to do that. So sorry that I took off script already. So sorry that I took off-script already. So we will be on with it. So this curriculum review started this year in September, and it really is a testament to the work of this team and to Steve, that we were able to efficiently, but also, I think, very much thoughtfully and deeply examine our program and make these recommendations going forward. And I'm very proud of the work that we did. We took time to read the research, to talk to stakeholders, to listen to teachers, listen to students, listen to the community. And I think that what we've come up with is a plan that will really enhance and maintain a rigorous and relevant and engaging social studies program. I think this is, and this slide, you might have seen it before, but it was incredibly helpful to have this much direction and focus for our work. I'm not sure that's always been the case when we undertake reviews, and I've been here a really long time, so that we could always return to these guideposts of our goals and our aspirations for all of our students. So we turn to the goals first and throughout the review to make sure that the work that we were doing aligns with those goals, as well as the more, the performance indicators that are underneath. This is our review team, so I thank them, and I appreciate their taking the time and the thoughtfulness to engage in this. It's not easy, and it's difficult to be out of the classroom, so I do appreciate it. We had representation from pretty much every building, every grade level. I also very much wanted to include the whole department, so beginning in August, at the onset of the review, as an entire team of teachers. We talked through our needs assessment and talked through some of the direction for the review. So tonight, we're just going to briefly do three things. Look at the needs assessment and the major considerations that inform the review. Talk through three of our major recommendations, as well as the justifications behind those, where the research and the support comes from, and how it aligns with those strategic goals, as well as the performance indicators. And then the goal or action steps that we're going to take to bring to fruition the recommendations that we have. And then we'll conclude, and if there's any comments or questions, we're happy to take them. So the needs assessment considerations, there's, I think, five major points here that after discussing with teachers and stakeholders, thinking about the places where we could improve our program, I always liked the idea of opportunities for growth rather than gaps or deficiencies. And so the first three on this slide, one, the elementary curriculum, which is always a bit of a tricky area, because we're a non-tested area. We all know, there's not a state test in social studies. And so we know that we want to support the ELA and the math departments in their work to build those skills for students. Post-COVID, during a post-COVID, we had a bit of a change in the structure of elementary social studies. So we essentially went to an every-other-nine-week model. So the students were receiving social studies instruction based on the nine-week block, so that required us to reexamine that program, trying to get more structured and intentional approach to that, and very much focusing on skills and supporting those skills for all of our students across all, really, disciplines. Probably, I don't know, you may or may not know, social studies has a lot of under its umbrella. We have history standards, we have geography standards, we have civics and governance standards, we have economic standards. So there's a lot we're expected to cover in a curriculum. So we look at that elementary curriculum and see how we can kick-start it with building those skills the students need. Secondly, meeting the needs of diverse learners. This was most pronounced in our discussion of our middle school program. We do not level social studies in any way until ninth grade. So we have a heterogeneous group of students, six, seven, and eight, who are really coming into their own when they're talking about history and current events and questioning. And it is, it can be difficult to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of those learners from across the spectrum in terms of ability and potential modifications, et cetera. So we're looking at that just to make sure that we're doing the best that we can by every student in social studies. Research, reading, and writing skills, if you've looked at the report, it's very much skill-focused. There is content, and our content specialists will never let that go to the wayside, but we know what we are doing is building capacity in students. That's what we want, the capacity to look at information, analyze information, understand historical thinking, do some historical exploration. But the skill focus, rather than just, you know, memorize this, we memorize that, we know what date that was, deepening that understanding so that they're carrying with them skills they'll have forever. Energy, flow, and collaboration. The size of our district makes it difficult sometimes to do this well and meaningfully. We really would like to try to strengthen the connections that we have, particularly with ELA and the library department, because I think there is so much great work that can be done together. And it's a matter of managing it and figuring out the logistics of it, but I think that we can do a lot to support one another. And then cross-disciplinary opportunities. And lastly, assessments, because we are not a standardized test area, we do develop our own assessments, and we have developed some common assessments in the past. I think not with the rigor that we needed to do it, and maybe not with the expertise and the professional development to make sure that we have really high-quality assessments that are assessing skills and research and writing. We looked at a lot of feedback from higher education. We had conference calls and interviewed five or six, five universities who talked about gaps that they're seeing in students in college. And every single one of them talked about reading endurance and informational literacy, and using a library to research and write. So that became part of the needs assessment there. This is our updated philosophy. It does focus on really preparing our students to be ready to be critical thinkers and analyzing information, both for content and substance, but also for source and for bias and questioning. We want our students to be skeptical, we want them to be thoughtful, we want them to be informed, because they're going to carry on the work of this country. So the first recommendation that we're going to focus on is the Common Authentic Assessments. I'm going to turn it over to Frank here, who's going to take the lead. I didn't even use my script, so I wasn't sure when my turn was done. But this is Frank, and I do appreciate him taking this.
In terms of the Common Authentic Assessments, to strengthen the social studies program, we recommend developing these assessments and expanding performance-based learning opportunities across K-12. Research highlights the importance of skills like historical thinking, source analysis, argument development, as essential for student success. Currently, our assessments lean heavily on factual recall, leaving gaps in measuring critical thinking and real-world application. Also, by embedding media literacy, we can equip these students to navigate digital information responsibly, fostering informed and engaged citizens. The shift will ensure our students are not just learning history, but actively applying their knowledge to understand and shape the world around them. The recommendations identified in our report are derived from our district balanced score card. The performance indicators are shared within the presentation up on the screen. I am going to stick to my script here. Recommendation four focuses on enhancing our social studies curriculum through the development of Common Authentic Assessments and the expansion of performance-based learning across grade levels, K to 12. Why this is important? Ultimately, traditional assessments often measure memorization. They don't always reflect the student's true understanding of historical thinking or civic literacy. We need assessments that demonstrate how students can apply their knowledge to real-world situations and develop critical thinking skills. So moving forward, our recommendation is that these assessments are truly measuring the student's understanding and application of social studies concepts, ensuring that our students are developing the critical thinking skills and civic engagement skills they need to be successful in the 21st century, and also providing our teachers with the support and resources they need to implement these changes effectively. We believe that by implementing these action steps, we can create a more engaging and meaningful social studies experience for all students.
The second recommendation we wanted to focus on is sort of the heart of our curricular recommendations. This is number five, where we're looking at both the pathway that students take, as well as the scope and sequence of the content that we are teaching. As I mentioned, we have four different disciplines that we're trying to spiral and weave throughout the curriculum, K to 12. And so we really do need to look at the pathway frequently, so that it's wonderful that we have the opportunity to do a review, to see whether that's working. Are there gaps in historical chronology? Since the last time we did a review, we've had eight more years of history. We've had two more elections and inaugurations, and so we have to find a way. I'm sure we all remember, like, my class in high school got to the Vietnam War, and then it was, it was 1986, but we stopped in 1970. We want our pathways to make sure that students are addressing current issues, as well as understanding their historical connections and alignment. So looking at our pathways, we want to make sure the civic education piece is being covered appropriately. We had originally, before the prior review, had a separate government class. We combined that with the 11th grade, Modern American History and Politics, and then eighth grade took upon a lot of the American government content as well. So it appears in both years, it appears every year. We just want to ensure that we're doing that justice. Secondly, the differentiated learning needs. Exploring the idea of, do we need leveled courses in the middle school? Do we need to have more differentiation within the classroom, and what would that look like? So enrichment, integration within the classroom, potentially different models of differentiated instruction, because we just want to feel like we're doing right by all of the students at those grade levels. And then looking how we can help with the college and career readiness, which is a big focus of the district, and making sure that our course sequences align appropriately so that they have a good transition from year to year here, and then hopefully, a really, really successful transition to wherever they go after high school. These are the district strategic plan goals, and which are aligned with these recommendations. So the goals and action steps. One thing that I really want to compliment Steve on is, he very much emphasized during the review, like, it's great to have all these ideas. We need this, we want that, we should change this, we should add this. But you need to have a plan. You need to have goals that are defined and attainable, and have some kind of thoughtful plan about the action that you're going to take. So highlighted here is doing a curriculum revision, K to 12, which is a great opportunity to start from scratch a little bit, realign with the standards, make sure that we're hitting all of the content that we need to hit. Embedding within that curriculum, and this will be, I think, part of the new look of the curriculum for us, is explicitly embedding those skills that we were talking about in terms of critical thinking and inquiry and sourcing of information. That will be embedded in the curriculum, so we can ensure that we're meeting those goals. Exploring options for the pathways, as I mentioned already. And the last one is kind of exciting. This was the great thing about the curriculum review, many great things, is that I get to meet with elementary teachers and middle school teachers that I don't see very often. And we started talking through the idea of, you know, what are these big themes and ideas we want students to carry through social studies? And it really is about citizenship, and about engaging with your community, and about historical exploration, and learning, and, right, experiencing a lot of diverse ideas and things. So the portfolio development, and I think that we linked within the presentation, a potential, sort of a template for it. The idea here is to start building, in the early years, in the early grades, some record of the thinking the student has done with respect to social studies, how they may have engaged with their community, what they might have, right, sort of done in terms of citizenship. The culmination is, we'll get every 18-year-old to register to vote before they graduate, but it begins in kindergarten, when they talk about who's in their class and who their classmates are, and what roles people play in their school, the custodian, and the teachers, and the support staff. So that's actually really exciting, and I think everyone's really excited about the idea of something that can carry forward. And at the end, each student will have a unique portfolio to them about their experience in social studies. These are our strategic plan goals with which they align. And then the action steps. Identifying, and we have done some of this work already, but really defining and sequencing the skills, and ensuring that we're building rigor each year, and ensuring that we have a common experience, assured experience for all of our students in reading, research, writing, primary sources, some computational thinking, literacy around information, media, and infographics. So we're going to be very deliberate about including those skills within our curriculum. We'd also like to partner with the library sciences department, which has been so receptive to us, and it's been really encouraging, so that we have, whether you're in Marshall Middle School, or Carson Middle School, or Engamar, you will have a common experience with research and writing in the library. It's hard sometimes with the, you know, the size of the district to make sure that that happens, but we have a good plan to have that come to fruition. And then the skill building, being really thoughtful and cognizant of, are we pushing students each year to build on their capacity? Are they doing more in terms of reading and writing with primary documents and analyzing informational text? And I think, I think we're doing an excellent job, but I think it's an important thing to pause and make sure that you're being more explicit with it.
If you did, then that is just fine.
Okay. I, this is why you have a script. This is why I just.
It was much better.
No, you didn't. I'm sorry. I feel, oh, please don't. It was.
Joelle, you were on a roll. You were on a roll, Joelle.
I apologize. Thank you. If nothing else, I hope you can feel my enthusiasm for this program, these teachers, the students, and this community. Because, yeah, this will, I think, this will be my last year as department chair of social studies. I think this is a great time to transition to a younger, fresher set of eyes and minds and so forth. So it has been an absolute privilege and a profound, I'm profoundly grateful for the opportunity to work with people of this caliber, and everyone in this room is included in that. And I forgot to include you, Dave, because you used to be my, Dave was my supervisor behind the scenes. Yeah. And what Dave always said when something came up, what about this? Do what's best for the kids, do right by the kids, and you will not be wrong. If there's any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mrs.
We will be happy to.
Yeah. Anyway. Ms. Keats, anyone who has heard you speak has never doubted your passion for this program. And thank you to all three of you, whether you held the microphone or not, and your, the entire team. And does anyone in the board have any questions or comments? Mrs. Blackford?
Thank you, Mrs. Warner, and thank you for your presentation. I especially appreciated how you were bringing it across from elementary on up through, and the collaboration with everyone, including the library. And I think that you're really on point as you talk about, you know, this progressive skill building and critical thinking and knowing how to research. These are all skills that you need really throughout life, certainly in college. And I really like all of your points. I think this is right where we need to be going. So thank you very much.
Dr. Gibbs?
Thank you. I had a question. When I read through the report, I think I came across a part where you talk about service projects. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I saw that. And when I got there, I thought, hmm, that's interesting. I wonder what they have in mind. So I wonder if you could maybe elaborate a little bit?
And I may not be able to pinpoint exactly where in the report you saw it, but probably as an example of what might be included in the civic portfolio we were talking about, we had not discussed any sort of universal or mandated service programs. One thing that I think, and One thing that I think, and Carson, you know this, and we often, you know, National Honor Society has a service requirement. And it always struck me as, you know, when they have the National Honor Society meeting, all the kids leave. I'm like, what are you, the dishonorable ones? You're like, left behind. And all of these kids are doing amazing things in their communities, whether it's through their sports team, or their music, or their church, or their, right? And I think, and we had talked to one school who talked about putting community service on a transcript as part of a profile of the student. So, I think it was really about being open to recognizing students and their service to their communities. It doesn't necessarily have to be attached to something like the National Honor Society.
Ms. Faber.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. This is more of a comment, but I just wanted to say that I'm excited about your excitement of joining more with the library, especially through research, because I know you talked to a couple of schools that said that students were lacking in that area. And especially as the libraries are keeping up with, as research moves online more than in books, whereas some of the other departments might be left a little bit in the dust with that. The library department keeps up with that.
They absolutely do.
Yeah. And as, as more and more research moves to being online, and finding sources that are accurate and dependable, I love that connection.
Ms. Hardy.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. I wanted to thank you all for this fabulous presentation and report. I really, really enjoyed it. It was especially student-centered for a curriculum report, and that was just fabulous to see. So, student-focused, skill-focused. I absolutely love the phrase, giving students skills they'll have forever. That's just exactly what our district needs to do for our students, I think. Thank you so much. I like, Mrs. Blackburn, I loved how you talked about going through the curriculum and looking for gaps, historical gaps of things that you're not covering, or are you covering things more times than are needed? Especially like, the focus on evaluating your assessments, using data, being really focused on what you're doing, and being able to prove what you're doing. Also, the interdisciplinary aspect of social studies, and like Ms. Faber said, working with the library, working on digital literacy, all those sorts of things are so important. Learning how to research, how to read, and just understand what you're reading, and turn it into what you want to work with it the way you want to. And the citizen portfolio. I only have one question after the presentation. Could you, and this is only because I'm not a social studies major, but could you tell us what the phrase "historical thinking" means?
Yeah, I think that we've been doing some work with Stanford Education History Group, which is thinking about history and assessments less from the, this battle occurred on this day, and then, it is about really the, thinking about the interconnectedness of history, and how you can draw connections between the past and the present, and compare and contrast, and see themes that develop over time. And it also is about being, I think this phrase is used a lot, but it happens every day in social studies, that critical thinking. You're thinking like, who wrote this and why? And what is the source of this? And how did this impact that? And I think that, that kind of historical thinking is, we tend to silo ourselves, and even within classes. I teach AP Econ, so, but I can't just silo myself into, they need to know the formula for this. They need to know why it matters, and what kind of impact it could have in the future, and what kind it had in the past, so.
Excellent, thank you so much for explaining that, really appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Mr. McClure.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. No question but a comment. You had mentioned encouraging the kids to become voters when they turn 18. Same daughter I mentioned, when we were talking about, the nursing, actually. She's an old enough kid that she turned 18 prior to the general election in her senior year, and voted in the primary. And then, subsequent to that, had been in interviews for scholarships. She's going to college, right? And one of the things that really impressed the interviewers was that she had voted twice. And she's there, it was like, wow, this kid's really, you know, got it going on, and got scholarship. Thank you for encouraging that.
And that is all student-driven. So, we always have a couple of students every year who say, hey, can we have a drive? And we support their efforts in it. They make it pretty easy now to register, which is nice, they can do it online. The other program that we've done the last couple of years is, I've gotten, I don't know how many, but 10 or 12 students to work the polls on Election Day. So, there's a student poll worker program that we got involved with, so they can get both community service hours, or they actually can get paid if they don't take the community service hours. But we have really tried to encourage students to have those kind of experiences. And as you said, there is, at the end of it, that's another thing that's going to distinguish these students from others, when they're applying for scholarships or schools, that they've had those experiences.
Anyone else? Mr. Corona.
Well, I just wanted to quickly say thank you to you and to your entire department. And I wanted to share briefly my experience with your department, and how it's had such a positive impact on me. Up until 8th grade, I was really a STEM-based kid. And then, I met Mrs. Mahalsky, who is one of my favorite teachers, and who, quite frankly, inspired me to go for this job. And, you know, really allowed me to express myself and my love for politics. I mean, even on my notepad here, it says United States Senate. And that is, that is a dream of mine, to run for the United States Senate one day. And I just wanted to also thank you for all the opportunities that you give us. I have family in California, and I shared with them that I was in a class called Honors Foreign Policy. And it was an awesome class, and they don't have that opportunity. And so, I'm just so grateful for the opportunities that you have given us, and to all these students to really diversify their experience in North Allegheny. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? We had two great reports tonight, and the health and nurse, the health services department, I kept going through, and I was under like, ooh, this, this, this data is interesting, and this fact is interesting, and I've learned so much. It's like, I didn't think about how, you know, they can't do the professional development. They're often teaching the professional development. So, I learned new things, and I was underlining lots of numbers and stuff. And when I went through the social studies, I kept writing, oh, yes, I like this idea. Yes, exclamation point. So, I'm, first, I'm going to run through some of those that I had. The expanding differential instruction, I'm really excited about that, especially at the middle school level. The citizenship portfolio, I love how you included the example, and you didn't have an example for every grade, but you had like, a majority of them. And it was, I had no idea, like, how would you do this for a kindergartner? And you had like, the little picture, like, you know, I forget what they were for each grade, but you mentioned like, thank you to the custodian, and then going through and see how that would grow year after year. I really appreciated that, and that you weren't afraid to put it in, even though you didn't have everything completed. I really liked seeing that work in progress. You mentioned that you got to the Vietnam War and stopped. I graduated from high school in 94. I don't think we ever got to the Vietnam War. I grew up in New England. We did the Massachusetts colony over and over again. I really thought, I really thought the pilgrims came before the Virginia colony, because that's all we ever talked about. The cross-cultural ties, or cross-curricular ties, you know, Ms. Faber highlighted the library, but you did also bring in like, the math and STEM component with data analysis. And I think that really is important, and that is a big, yeah, and that's key too. So, I was glad that you highlighted that. Also, appendix B, and you asked those questions of the other school districts. I was like, yes, this is exactly what I would want to know. So, I was, I thought like, you guys were asking the right questions the whole way through. Really appreciated all those things. I do have a few questions for you guys. Last curriculum review, or you mentioned at the beginning of the report, that you, since the last review, had combined Modern American History and American Government from like, two separate classes, and now they're combined. How's that going?
I think really well. And it gave me great pause, because I was an American government teacher. And I was not, I was like, we can't give up American government. The idea of it, and this is, I think, to Ms. Hardy's question as well, is, you know, we don't do government in a vacuum either. So, we teach principles of government for nine weeks. And then, we embed the history, it's sort of the case study of the government principles. So, if you're talking about, you know, USP Nixon, you could do that court case and talk about Supreme Court's role. So, you're, you are really making the history, the case studies of the government, rather than, and it is a class, but it is tough. Some students really despise American government. They thought it was boring, and they could, so I think it does enliven it for them, because they can see, oh, that's what you were talking about, when you talked about a checks and balance, or that's what a veto looks like in practice, because this is a president who vetoed this bill. So, I think it's really, it's worked really well. And it also allows the teacher to have the students for a year. Which, when you're in 11th grade, having that continuity and thinking about the skills, you really get to know the student's strengths, and interests, and areas of growth, and you're able to work on those a little bit more, rather than switching at a semester.
Great, I'm, I'm so glad you guys were willing to try something new, and thrilled that it, that it worked out. I had a question about the, you're going to need a new K to 5 resource, right? Is that?
The one we have is expired, next year, or last year.
Okay. Are those consumables? And so...
They were previously, the ones we are using are consumables. So, part of our next step will be to look, and the nice thing is that in the testament, Steve, that we really put the goals and the curriculum ahead of the resource. Social studies, I don't want the resource to drive curriculum. I want to know what the best curriculum looks like, and find resources that align with it. So, I don't know what the next iteration might look like, but what we know what we're looking for is strong literacy development within social studies, and strong skill development, and writing pieces, so that when we look through the other resources, that's what we're looking for.
I love that approach, the curriculum driving it, not the resources. As a board member, I am going to ask, so because they're, is there going to be a huge budgetary impact because of that, or is because they're consumables, is this something where it would stay consistent over the year? Or do you just not know yet, because you're not far enough along in the process?
I don't know, but I wouldn't anticipate it to be dissimilar to the previous one.
Okay.
Our next step, maybe, A, we could look at vendors, our current resource, and through that, we'll print it.
Right, so we have to find something else. I just know for some other departments, we've had to put money away in our fund balance, because we know we have this huge expense coming up. And I hadn't heard anything about this, so I was hoping that it meant, you know, not some abnormally large expense that we were not anticipating, at least from my perspective.
And let's say, following on that, a lot of the 9 to 12 classes are really largely separate away from traditional textbooks over time, right? So, over the years, I'd like to say we've saved hundreds of classes, but not hundreds. But there are certain grade levels, and I think, especially in elementary and middle school, where there is, there's so much that they have on their plates, that having that really boggy resource is necessary.
That's great. I know you moved goal, and goal was moved into middle school.
It was moved into social studies.
Social studies and middle school level.
I would like to look at that.
You'd like to look at that again, okay. And that's a big change for you guys, I'm glad you, yeah, I think it's worth seeing how it's going. And I, and I hope that whatever happens, like, I'm really excited about embedding that differentiation, wherever it is, and so, I'm looking forward to that. And I think that is all I have for tonight. Thank you guys so much. Thank you all for the great work on your presentations. Ms. Hardy, you wanted to add something?
I, I just wanted to say something quickly before you all go. You know, we're knee-deep in curriculum review season, and I wanted to especially recognize Mr. Smith's work as the district's curriculum coordinator, who works hand-in-hand with each department, as described here this evening, as they go through this review process. Every single group comments on how helpful he is, how instrumental he is to making their, their presentation better, and finding direction within their district. And several principals have mentioned how fabulous he is in the classrooms, and how often he's in the buildings as well. So, I just really wanted to say thank you to Mr. Smith for all of his work, every day, and every day, and this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy, well said. And now, we can move on to the rest of our board folder, and you all may move on. But we will start with our student activities report. Mr. Corona and Ms. Faber.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. The Student Council continues to have a large group of actively contributing students attending the meetings and building up service hours during in-school and after-school events. Our most recent events included a Valentine's Day luncheon for all of our staff and teachers, as well as hiding over 1,400 hearts around the school with each of, each student's name on each one. We are looking forward to St. Patrick's Day, where we, where we will be hiding gold coins and little leprechauns around the school for students to find, and bring to the office for a prize. Our 25, 26 Student Council elections are just around the corner, so good luck to each of our candidates. She Leads Society has a guest speaker from UPMC Hillman's Cancer Center coming to speak on April 22nd. Ms. Boyd will be speaking on ovarian, cervical, and breast cancer, specifically ways to home screen and the importance of regular exams. She Leads Society plans to incorporate a service activity for patients at the Hillman Center as a follow-up to her talk. The Table Tennis Club recently hosted their pizza pong, their annual pizza pong tournament on Wednesday, February 26th. The event proved a great success, as 96 students and teachers from NAI and Nash played pong and feasted on unlimited pizza and drinks. Mr. Wenshaw loves to test my English pronunciation, so here we go. Conviviality and camaraderie filled the NAI cafeteria for four hours, and at the end, Henry Tang emerged victorious after defeating Rohan Reddy-Bondi in the tournament final. The Multicultural Student Union is beginning to plan for the remainder of this year's cultural celebrations and displays. We are now in the process of creating our display and presentation for Ramadan. Partitions have also been set up outside of our auditorium to provide students with privacy during their prayer times. Heart for Ur has been working with U-Pitt Sleep Medicine Center to collect blankets to distribute to homeless individuals within our community. Their blanket, their blanket drive is being held this week and next, March 10th through the 21st at NAI. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. National Honor Society members were actively involved in February, volunteering at several events such as a robotics competition, the Nash Musical, and Facial Hair February, to raise funds for the caring place. Members also helped with volunteering at the Vincentian Home. Looking ahead, the group will also host a donation drives in March, including for Hearth and Jarrett Fox. NHS members have accumulated over 5,900 volunteer hours this year, and continue to engage in local service projects. In February, the French Club and French National Honor Society members volunteered at Hosack Elementary, Elementary School, presenting information about French-speaking artists during their traveling art gallery day. In March, the group celebrated Mardi Gras, learning more about the holiday's significance in the Francophone world. Throughout February, the cast and crew of the NA Spring Musical worked hard to prepare for the performances, learn music, and move props to the stage. By the end of the month, they had full costume, hair, and makeup runs, and performances at the start of March. The musical was a great success and a fun experience to everyone involved. Today, I hosted Dr. Hyland and Mr. Cox for a luncheon at Nash. The event was a great success, and over 70 students were in attendance, which is a lot more than, you know, usual. So, that was very good to hear. In addition to my report this month, we have six items for board consideration. Permission for the North Allegheny AFJROTC to travel to Gettysburg, Harris, Gettysburg, Harrisburg, and Hershey, PA. Waiver of Board Policy 241 for the AFJROTC trip. Permission for the PMEA Region Honors Choir to travel to Waynesburg, Pennsylvania. Waiver of Board Policy 241 for the PMEA Region Honors Choir trip. Permission for the North Allegheny TSA students to travel to Champion, PA. And finally, permission for the Junior Classical League students to travel to State College, Pennsylvania. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Ms. Hardy, the curriculum report.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Warner. This month in the curriculum folder, the board has one item for board action to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Head Start and Pre-K Accounts Program.
Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we can move on to the finance report. Mr. Weniger.
Thank you. This month, there are four items for board action, and two information-only items. The actionable items are the student expenditures for January 2025, the AIU 25, 26 Program of Services budget, the accounts payable list, and the budget transfers. And the information-only items are the ending cash balance for February 20, for February, and the 24, 25 February forecast.
Thank you, Mr. Weniger. Thank you, Mr. Weniger. Any questions or comments on these items?
The only, just FYI on the information-only, just the, the monthly budget update, things are still tracking favorably. We actually had a positive swing this month, minor, but a positive swing. So we're still projected to be around $1.1 million surplus. That's always good.
Excellent. Human Resources Report. Ms. Britton Dozier.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have eight voting items in the HR folder this month. The items include resignations and retirements, appointments, wage and status changes, honoraria and club activities, supplemental contracts, tuition reimbursement for additional education, recognition for additional education, and leaves of absence.
Any questions or comments on these items?
I have two brief comments. We have two significant retirements that we'll be voting on this month. The beloved principal at Peoples, Suzie Ballaback, who is retiring after 25 years in the district, 20 of which she served at Peoples. We thank her and wish her all the very best. And Robert Welka, head custodian, who served the district for 32 years. We thank him and wish him all the very best in his retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Britton Dozier. Any other comments or questions on this folder? I will just add that as a Peoples parent, I was at that building for 13 years. I feel so lucky that all four of my children got to go through that building under Mrs. Ballaback's leadership, and she, she is something, and this, we will really miss her over there. Okay, moving on to the property and supplies report. Mr. McClure.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We will have five items for consideration next week, first being the Peoples Elementary School Sensory Room Monetary Donation. The second, disposable, disposal of transportation equipment. Third, another monetary donation. Fourth, addendum to the consultant agreement with Weber Murphy Fox. The fifth being a proposal for the paging Intercom Clock and Emergency Notification System at Carson Middle School.
Mr. McClure, any comments?
Oh, of course. It, it's really kind of neat when we get these donations. It's the Peoples Elementary PFA that's actually donating up to $2,500. PTA, I guess it is actually, and that's for sensory room improvements. So that's kind of neat. And the other monetary donation is $3,000 from the Michael McNaughton Band Memorial Fund, and that's to fund music, sports, extracurricular activities, and we appreciate both of those. Those are, those are awesome. Disposable, disposal of transportation equipment, we've got some rusty old buses that got to go. I'm glad to see that, because some of those, the particular brand of bus, in discussions with the mechanics, are less than desirable, and we're glad to move those along. And the Weber Murphy Fox, that's a continuum of our consultant agreement to continue our, our projects and our future renovations and expansions. And the last one, the proposal for paging and the Intercom Clock, that's a, they discovered, actually, in the building we're in, that, that we needed to expand that project just a little bit. And I'm going to ask for a little clarification, if you would, on that item, because it, it was originally proposed, it's gone up in price, we're just, I think, even a bit over budget on that, so maybe we can get some explanation on that.
Yes, absolutely. Original budget for that was $230,000. Then it was discovered this lower floor here, the CAO was not included in that. So they went through, re-priced it, and actually, $30,000. They were doing every single personal office and everything with our use of the Raptor system, how all central administration, how they uses the Raptor, so the notification, we're keeping the paging clock notification system out in the hallways and added a couple of key areas there, to make sure we can still hear it from the hallways, along with all of their Raptor systems. So that's still brought it down considerably by just now $249,000, I think we're going to correct here, and $249,400. So we got much closer to our original budget number. I tried to push it to get a little closer, and I, it wasn't successful.
Thank you. Thank you. It always shocks how much, shocks me at least, how much these cost, and appreciate the extra effort in order to bring it closer to budget. That's all I have.
Does anyone else have questions or comments? Mr. Weniger.
With the addendum to the Weber Murphy Fox, is there a, like a scope that is attached to this? I couldn't, I was having trouble opening it up, but like, what's the, what are they doing for this work?
Right now, they're continuing the concept pre-design phase. This agreement's basically taken until December, when we're projecting to go out to RFP for the design in the fall. It's just a hourly fee schedule that's proposed on here for the Weber Murphy Fox Tower Engineering Case Design Group and the pool consultant. They're all currently working on that project. They did give projected budget numbers of what these costs would look like, and we're planning to stay at or below that. Does that help?
Sure, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we can move on to the Student Services Report. Dr. Gibbs.
Thank you. There are four items for board action in the Student Services Report. There is a university school college preparatory enrollment contract. There is an addendum to the pro-care therapy agreement. There is an independent educational evaluation agreement, and there's Students with Exceptional Abilities for Extended School Year Agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbs. Any questions or comments on these items?
No.
Okay. We can move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Highland.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have seven items for board consideration this month, and we have five informational. I'll start off with, we have our professional seminars and development student sponsorship and chaperones, small games of chance, a second read on Policy 111, 115, 117, and Policy 125, and we have retirement of Policy 147. I do want to share with the board that we are ripping through these policies slowly but surely. We've made some, some serious progress. At the end of this month, we'll have 15 policies that have been passed, light speed compared to the years past, and by the end of next month, we should have 24, if the ones who, that would you look at for the first read, which are Policy 123.1, Policy 1.23.2, Policy 124, Policy 124.1, and Policy 140. And again, I just, I just want to thank the board for their diligence and, and working, reading. It's a, it's a lot of policies to go through, and I, I just want to say, we appreciate it from the administrative team that you're doing the due diligence to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Highland. And thank you, Ms. Wyman, for all the work you do on the policies, highlighting the changes for us and all the formatting you put in there. It really helps us go through and review them, and we appreciate it. Now we will move on to speakers on non-voting items. We have no pre-registered speakers, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any topic for up to two minutes? Please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. I'll do that. My name is Brian Snyder. I live at 9203 Merrimont in McCandless. I just wanted to come up for two reasons. Number one is my, I'm with my kids that are, my boys are from the middle school over in Englemar, and we are here tonight because of their work in the Boy Scouts. So oddly enough, I wish the social studies folks were still all here, but they're working on a merit badge called Citizenship in the Community. So I didn't look at the agenda, it just was, it worked out great. So I, I think that's an excellent way to match all that together, along with their work with their merit badge there. And also just wanted to come up, because there wasn't registered speakers, so they could see that people from the public can come up and engage the elected officials and stuff. So, thank you all.
Thank you all for attending. Would anyone else like to come and speak for up to two minutes? Okay. Then we move on to our closing items. Do any board members have any announcements or reminders this evening? Dr. Highland.
If the boys need a picture in front of the NA with any of the board members or myself for the merit badge, I'd be more than willing to pose for that picture for you, okay?
And if there's no other comments, then I adjourn this meeting.